Starting recording is Amor.
So we'll pretend I'm gabbling our meeting into starting the BVSD Board of Education Prioritization Meeting. Laura, could you please call the roll? Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Neznik.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Heather and Rob, and we'll just start our prioritization meeting. Know that we have an executive session after this meeting, and we hope to end by 4:30. We have to end by 4:30, but hopefully you will be well on your way, Heather, before we have to do all of that, so.
Laura sent me the calendar invitation. I was like, wow, I think four hours will be more than enough, but okay, I appreciate maybe there's more to talk about than I was anticipating. Thank you for that clarity, Kathy. All right, you want to take it away, Rob, and then I'll hop in as appropriate. Unless you've done this one before, so we'll just get out of the way.
I do. I appreciate it. Good to see everybody today. As a reminder, if we use our microphones, it's going to pick up better. We'll have to remind each other. So yes, it's our prioritization meeting. I really appreciate the opportunity to do this today in June, give our team a little bit of a summer head start as we start to be thinking about the fall. I'll turn it over to Heather to do just a check-in with everyone. I will do what I've done for the past couple of years. I'll review what we went over in 2023. I will present the proposed priorities for fall 2023. I'll go through each item, talk about the board's role, staff's role, and then open that up for conversation around the order and organization of our prioritization board, which is over here. Special thanks to Dr. Hill who helped carry it down the stairs because the elevator was working today, so shout out to Dr. Hill. So with that, I'll turn over just a quick, you know, we have consistently go through the vision and mission of the school district to center us as we're prioritizing the work of the district over the course of the next semester. Do I all read through those? Our value statements. As a reminder, the three long-term student outcomes from our strategic plan, ignite, equip, soar. And with that, I'll turn it over to Heather.
Well, thank you. I'll turn it over to Heather and turn it off so now we can hear her. Good afternoon, everyone. Generally, before we start a prioritization conversation, we like to spend a little bit of time sort of doing some reflections on how everyone's feeling about things. Would love to hear from you in no particular order. Again, a couple of things that you're feeling really good about, either work that the board has done, things that you're seeing happening in schools, with staff, with students, or things that you feel like are really just generally victories for the way that this group is working together. I will take volunteers, but I would like to hear from everyone eventually. Yes, please.
At our last board meeting, we heard the update about the National Honor Society revisions, and I just can't stop thinking about it. It's been two years in the making, and I'm so proud of how it all came out and just really excited about it, and glad that I could see that through my four years of on the board. It makes me really happy.
Fantastic. Thanks.
I'm really excited about the work on New Vista. It's exciting to see it coming together. It's a school that has been a long time coming and one that I think is not going to only be enjoyable for our students, but our entire community is going to appreciate it.
Fantastic. Great.
I guess I'm excited about the continued work and progress that we're making with our strategic plan, plugging along there related to disproportionate across the board. I'm also excited that, you know, we are at a place to have conversations with the long-range advisory committee about dealing with declining enrollment and what that has in store for us.
So I'm really excited about all the work that's been done on Grad Plus. And what, I mean, just the change from last year to this year is really remarkable, and I hope we can continue that. And I am excited also in that umbrella thing is adding more bilingual strands, Bob Greenlee's opinion notwithstanding. So yeah, I'm really excited and proud of that.
I'm happy we have a balanced budget even though we're required to. But I'm a little nervous about the budget going forward, and I'm sure we'll be talking about how we can balance all the great things that we have the capacity to do, but maybe not the budgeting to do. So I look forward to that conversation.
Well, I didn't read Bob Greenlee's comments, so you need to fill me in on that. Not now. Knowing Bob Greenlee, I can imagine what he said. The, I'm excited about all the wonderful opportunities that have been created for kids of color, students of color. A lot to do yet, obviously. And also, I want to echo Lisa's comment on New Vista. It's a long time coming, and I'm super glad to see that they're getting their new school. What else am I excited about? I'm excited that I'm not going to be here when you start talking about declining enrollment.
Not it. And Rob, I appreciate that you are not actually a member of the board, but I'd love to hear anything that you'd like to reflect on from the last year or so.
Thank you, Heather. Well, you know, I do think that there's lots of points of pride and lots of things to continue to do as we really kind of prepared for this next semester, taking feedback from board members throughout the course of this past semester and beginning to highlight. Just going through some of the work, I mean, at the end of the year, I just think it's always a great time to reflect. Very proud of the work that our instructional team is doing, our academics team. I've shared with you all a folder, and at your convenience, if you want to know and understand what coherence and alignment and focus looks like in a school district, I'm really proud of this document that Dr. De La Cruz and our team was able to put together to really guide our leaders and principals before they left for the summer to get everybody on the same page, to set clear expectations, and to prepare them mentally for the work moving forward. And whether it's leading, our co-teaching, our literacy adoption, or preparing for our math adoption, or, you know, whether it's Grad Plus, or middle school math, or math pathways, or, you know, all of the things that we've taken on with your leadership and guidance. It's just, I think that we have a lot to be proud of. And we have significant work coming our way. So we think about this next semester and the course of the next year to two to three years, getting this district to be in a position to successfully handle declining enrollment in a way that preserves the opportunities for kids and makes good, strong fiscal decisions, I think, is critically important. Continuing the work of Grad Plus, continuing the work of disproportionate discipline, continuing the work of increasing the number of teachers of color. There's lots of work that will need to continue to go on, but I'm excited for it. And I'm excited to work with you all over the course of the next semester.
Excellent. All right. Turn it back on. I was going to be you in like a one-minute. So you recall that a significant part of the conversation that we have every year during our prioritization discussions is checking in on things that Laura helpfully tracks over the course of the year, that you all as board members bring up from time to time and say, you know, it'd be great if we could talk about the insert name of topic here. And so, Rob, you're going to go through these because many of these have already been addressed or are on the work plan. Sometimes we save this list for the end, but it's front-loaded this time because much of it you'll see coming forward in Rob's remarks as part of the work plan for the year that lies ahead. So look at this as I see what you're doing. Then Rob's going to say some stuff, and then we'll circle back to any remaining unattended-to items from this list and anything else that might be on your mind for the work that lies ahead.
In some of this list, I don't, I'm not sure. Typically, after we go through the prioritization, we cross the things out that we feel like everybody feels good about. And so we may be lagging a little bit because the list was a little bit lengthy. So I try to go through topics and then just my assessment of where things are. We had study of fees. For members, you'll recall, you saw that this past spring. It will be on our board to talk about in the beginning of fall. At one point, we were talking and discussing about the land acknowledgement, if we wanted to shorten it. At some point, I think there's conversation. I feel like we've gotten to a place where everybody's reading the land acknowledgement and sharing in that. Unless you all share a different opinion on doing something, I would say that we're in a good place with that. Lisa, you had brought up the "This Is Not Who We Are" film into our curriculum. We've incorporated that into district PD. I'd be honest with you, I'd have to see where we're incorporating that into our curriculum, maybe in some of our high schools, but that hasn't been something that is, that we've standardized.
What's district P?
PD. I missed the D. Professional Development.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Right, so leaders have seen it, teachers have seen it. Yeah, that's, sorry about that. We added another work session on Grad Plus. We can have a discussion today about if we wanted to do a tour of bond projects. If there's going to be enough work that's happening this fall to maybe go see, to do something. We've done that, we've talked about this on a couple of occasions. We can talk about trying to land that. Student voter registration awareness week, we did a communications plan and board resolution on that, and we'll continue to do that. Lisa, you had talked about lengthening work session time. We've taken that advice in some of the bigger work sessions. Do you remember that?
Well, I do. I just wanted to clarify. I didn't think generally lengthening work session time is my hope, but that cutting down on the number of topics that we're focusing on, giving enough time for adequate question and answers, doing those presentations. I think it's less about spending more time in work sessions and more about having that time involve board engagement and back and forth rather than just presentations one after another.
So taking that advice, and as you see, many of our work sessions, we didn't double up, tried to give them a little bit more space and length. We had a special education update in the spring. Kitty, I know that the feedback you'd given on the gender pronouns and policy is work that Kathleen has been integrating. At one point, we were talking about LGBTQ references. That should be Fall '22 with our state board advocacy. Richard, if there's more to do with that, when we kind of come around the topics, I'd love to hear about that. We have our student moment, which I think we all agree has been a highlight. But Kathy, if there was further engagement from students in board meetings, then we could hear about that as well.
At some point, we might want to talk. Some districts have student representatives that come and then to the board, but I've always struggled with how you just have one student do that, and we haven't really had that conversation. I do so appreciate the student moments, and I don't think we're getting the pushback from people that, hey, I didn't get invited, at least not yet. So I think that's encouraging. So if there's a conversation to be had, great. If not, if people are happy with the level we're at.
People listed go-back items in case folks want to add more after you get through all your remarks.
Sure. Policy IJ on curriculum. Did we, at Fall 2023, did we review this that this past spring, spring, Kathleen? We did, didn't we?
We did, IJ.
Yeah, we did. Board compensation, we had a conversation in the spring. We have some space and time for you all to discuss in the fall, early fall. Community schools, we provided an update about a month ago, kind of where we are with that. Universal preschool, we have another, we had an update in the spring. We have another update beginning in the fall, early to kind of review some of that issue, and I'll go through the details on what we have there. Beth wanted us to have a retreat. Remember, we had a retreat last October. Board budget forecast, believe that we did that within this budget process.
And we've talked about, because there's so much now going on around property taxes and ballot measures, that maybe the district can put together some kind of helpful, something on the website to explain how we get our funding. Because, and we'll talk about it again tomorrow, but I think there's a huge misunderstanding even amongst our elected officials. They seem to think we just set our mills wherever we want. And so I think if we could do some kind of explanation, and it would be great if we could, because I'd set our local mills at zero and let the state fund us, but they wouldn't allow us to do that. So I think it's a little broader than just the budget part, because I think as we go into declining enrollment and less money from the state and Esther dollars running away and all that, I just think a general top-level description of how our funding works might be helpful.
Agreed. I've actually heard from the chamber this morning. Businesses are reaching out, and just a lack of understanding of the Colorado School Finance Act and how that works and what's in our control, what's not in our control. You know, if taxes go at 50%, that doesn't mean the district revenue goes 50%. It doesn't work that way. So in any event, we are planning on providing that and look forward to having some more conversation as we pass the budget, hopefully tomorrow on Tuesday. Funding for schools, I think that's all in the same bucket. Restorative justice, I didn't, I don't have, we did an update last fall. I don't have an update planned for this coming fall, although you would get information on some of the impacts of restorative justice when we present our strategic plan metrics around disproportionate discipline, but I didn't break out a separate topic that could be something we could circle back to. The idea of considering other measures for strategic plan metrics, I think that that would be a good conversation for us to add as we present the strategic plan metrics on tomorrow, if that's the desire of the board, to start to engage and think about that. I think that would be the right time to do that. Free and reduced lunch funding for students. Well, Prop FF helped us with that, so we're good there. And so those were the topics that we had on the list. Some maybe had been complete for a while, but I wanted to be thorough and make sure that we responded to all of the topics.
So I have a question about student moment is how does, how do we decide or who decides what the student moment is going to be? And I mean, are there competing interests that you have to choose between, or what?
So I've let this, I've left this up solely to the communications team, who's communicated to our schools what the student moment is. The moment is, schools who have things for student moment, reach out to communications and they coordinate. And so, and to Kathy's point, I've heard nothing but positive. It's just a positive opportunity to highlight students. And that, between that and superintendent's honor role, we feel like we're doing a really good job of trying to really recognize great things happening.
So have any been turned down?
Not to my knowledge.
Richard.
The community schools, it says complete Spring 2023. Is that the community, are community schools? Or is that the community schools proposal that we had on the, that you brought to the table at one time? Which one are you talking about?
That was the community schools, the community school model, right, for the local schools. And at our board meeting in May, Richard, I think that you were gone, we talked about really replicating the family resource schools model, trying to support that and trying to get more funding for that, as opposed to just designating one site as a community school, we felt like just the needs in our community. It would, that the things that we were doing, we have 21st century learning centers and family resource schools, that just replicating those would be the best approach. And so that's kind of where we landed there.
The reason I'm asking is because I know that I've mentioned, I don't know if it was part of the agenda setting or not, that we, I would like to revisit the community schools policy.
So I have that one for a conversation after Rob's remarks. Now, unless anyone has any other clarifying questions on these, we'll let Rob get through his vision, and then I'll come back to community schools policy. Also, heard a question about, do we want to do something differently or more on discipline related to restorative justice? Anything further on student engagement? Anything further on LGBTQ engagement? And then if you wanted to tour the block projects. So those are the list already I have for, we'll visit when Rob's done. Anything, anyone else have clarifying questions or comments on these items? Hot dog. What's plans, Dan?
Well, we had a busy spring and feel like that we were able to deliver on every priority outside the student fee policy. We just ran out of time, bless you. Need more time for that, but that's coming back in August. And so when we think about the priorities that are embedded in the prioritization board, this is kind of what we settled on based on feedback. Green squares are, correspond now to the green squares on the big board, which are work sessions. Orange, thank you, Laura Schaefer, for that brilliant suggestion.
Excellent.
And then for information items, those are in orange. And then what I've done is I've gone through each item. I've really tried to clarify what the board, what I feel like the board's role should be, what our role should be, but always open for discussion on that. You'll notice that a little bit different is that I have two boxes that are now double boxes. I just think that they're going to take at least twice the amount of time, multiple sessions, as we begin to think about long-range advisory council, some of the feedback that you'll be hearing from them tomorrow, some of the feedback that they've already shared with us around what are some of the district conditions that you have to be looking at and tweaking and adjusting as a parallel path to the work we're doing with individual schools that will fall, that are declining individually. And so attendance boundaries, open enrollment policy, focused choice school policies, you know, which may be embedded in some of those other policies. I've set aside a good amount of time for us to work through that during work session, and I'll show you that when I get to the board. But I'll go through each of these in more detail, then I can go to the board, then I can turn it back over to Heather to kind of think through what else needs to happen. How's that sound? All right. Student fee policy, this is coming to you all in October 10th. As a reminder, we shared with you, Kathleen shared an initial proposal on the fees. We've got like 400-some fees. Most places have like 10. We've got some work to do on that. So we'll be bringing that back to you in a work session, then we'll go study action and get that approved, hopefully by the beginning of November. Our budget process, you know, a couple, you know, I've had some conversations with some board members around, you know, as we think about being in a different era in declining enrollment, our traditional budget presentations and processes might, we might be able to revise some of those, some of those presentations while also honoring that the consistency for board members and community certainly is helpful. We may have to do some deeper dives around budget process. We have our two presentations on budget, September and December. December is approving the audit, and in September is just laying out the budget process of the year, which would be a great time for board members to provide feedback on budget process and give us any direction they'd want as we think about improving that.
Any questions?
When we do approve the supplemental and amended budget?
Yeah, I think that we have those, yeah. The amended budget comes.
I think in January.
December 12th. So I'm sorry, I should, that's where I have there. And then.
We start looking at the budget and amendments in the fall, so I just didn't want to lose that.
Yep, so that's September, I think, is when Bill brings that back.
A little green diamond.
Yeah, oh, you see, yeah. Notice the green diamonds. I like that.
I'm jazzed by all of your polls. I just have a clever question. You can actually read that?
Well, I put them on there, so kind of.
When I was observing Dr. Anderson read those, I was like, doing a little eye test myself. I could read a chunk of them.
That's it.
Visual clarification here.
I'll call my doctor. Thank you for that. Karen.
October, October, we'll be bringing you strategic plan metrics. In addition to, you'll be seeing some metrics on Tuesday, and that's, this will be the third and fourth time you've seen those metrics. Again, if there are changes or adjustments to the metrics or if there's a review of the metrics and some deeper engagement with community, we take that feedback then. UPK, we have a presentation set up for August to let you all know where things landed, how many kids we have, what are the implications, any new rules, laws. I just think that we'll just have to continue to update you, just because of the budget implications. And I noted that in the board support role, that our model and what we, you know, who we projected to show up, who actually showed up, we were able to hire all our positions, open up all of our care models. So August 8th feels like the best time to talk about that, right at the beginning of the year. This is something that we agreed upon at our retreat, which would be a board advocacy meeting, which we've paired with the legislative priorities in a work session, a sole work session, where we, and we'll have to work together to talk about what are the topics we would consider during that meeting, you know, if board members would want to bring up what topics that they might want the board to take a position on in November elections. September feels like that's the right time to do that, so we get ahead of that. And that would be the work session on September 19th. Elementary school lunchtimes. And so while we haven't made any big, significant financial changes, facilities changes, as we've talked to our principals, our elementary school principals, they know and understand that this is a priority of the board, and we have directed principals to work towards getting 25 minutes for elementary school and not backing lunchtimes back up to recess. And so we're going to take a review of that in August to see what schools still weren't able to make that happen, and then make some recommendations in November. End of November feels like the right time because then that would have budget implications if that's something that we need to move forward with. We'll know the barriers at that point in time. There won't be any barrier in expectation. So you'll get to see in September, CMAS, PSAT, SAT results, and that's just pretty much a, just a work session. It's not a work session, that's a.
Information item.
Information item, yep.
Board Vanna, very helpful. Appreciate it.
Strategic plan update, we'll give you an update in October. Update the work on Grad Plus. Strategic initiatives, October 24th. Legislative priorities will be paired with that September 19th work session. Board compensation, we have a conversation for you all August 8th to continue the conversation to know and understand what's the will of the board. You know, we'll be looking to the board to provide us direction, and then staff would be able to write the resolutions based on your direction in regards to board compensation, or take no action. I mean, that would be up to the world's board. School attendance policies, we have in August, that's attendance boundaries. Yes, having some conversation around just school attendance policy. We'll present the policy, the history of the policy. Board can provide feedback, give us directions to make any changes. And this refers to schools, you know, so our schools have attendance policies where if you miss partial day, that there's no way for that to be excused, even if you have excusable reasons. And we feel like it's a good time to revisit that.
I'm glad we're talking about that. Could we also talk about some of the unexcused versus excused and the burden we put on parents when asking for doctor's notes and all of this? Okay. I thought it was just this half day, because I mean, just for full days as well.
We'll do the whole thing. Everything will be in front of you. Yeah.
JH and JHR, student absences and excuses are the attendance policies separate from the boundary policies.
That was my clarification, the absences, excuses versus attendance zone. So that's a separate category.
And can you include the numbers of children that have been referred to trinacy court?
Yeah.
Yes, we can do a little date.
As well as their ethnic backgrounds?
Yes.
Yeah, we can do all that.
I got a Nance degree.
Long-range advisory committee will be updating the board in November on their continued work. As a reminder, after their presentation, they'll continue to look at potential declining enrollment in middle schools. And so they will come and present information item in November. Our open enrollment policy. Our open enrollment policy, uh, we have, so for the policies, I have work sessions for attendance boundaries, student fees, open enrollment, um, and then attendance, uh, oh, and then focused schools. And so those are all individual work sessions, so we'll have at least an hour. And then I've also booked two additional work sess, three additional work sessions named policy work. Based on just anticipating, we're gonna need more time with those things. And so I've really tried to dedicate a lot of time so we can have deep, rich conversation. I would anticipate that the communities wanna, gonna wanna provide feedback and input as we start to begin to have those public conversations. So just, uh, starting in, in September, all the way through December.
We had talked before about, um, surveying parents and trying to understand, okay. So not just maybe why, but also could we make sure we're collecting information on distances, specifically with the neighborhood schools as well? I think trying to understand some of those metrics around people who are going to something that's closer to, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
So, to explain to everyone, um, you know, the idea that we need to do some deep surveying of our, of our parents early on in the semester to help inform the open enrollment policy work, the attendance policy work, focus choice policy work. Um, we'll, I feel like we'll need to have, um, some, some data collected from our community. Uh, and, um, and so we'll be working, uh, as staff, we'll work with the board. I'll keep you all updated on what that would look like and certainly invite your input as we begin to survey our community. As we begin to start touching these policies, what are, what are people's core beliefs? You know, if, you know, what, what is it that attracts them to a school? Uh, what is it that keeps them in their neighborhood school? All of those types of pieces of information I think would be valuable and really important to have before we dive into the work of those. Because if we don't have that information, we're just operating on kind of what we feel. Uh, I think that, you know, we had just, given the opportunity to have more information to kind of start steering us in the right direction, I think is the right.
And I think one thing that we talked about in particular too, just for clarity, was like, folks, there's concern, I think, from many people in the city of Boulder about how often do we have people using single occupancy vehicles to transport kids to a neighborhood school rather than use their own? And I think we were talking about things like, um, not only understanding how far people are going, but how often are people choosing a different school because it's actually closer to home or work? Or because it's on the bike path or et cetera, et cetera? How often are these transportation decisions negatively affecting climate and streets? And how often are they actually helping to ease that burden and trying to get some sort of understanding? It's too complex to get it, you know, just to high level, but even some information that would tend to support one theory or the other about whether this is having a negative impact on our infrastructure.
So attendance boundary policy, um, you know, very similar, um, uh, kind of a timeframe and policies around focus schools, special academic programming. Again, all around the same timeframe, really starting to dig in in, in October, September, late September, early October.
So with the policies, these policies coming up, starting in September, do you, this, I was gonna ask this at tomorrow's board meeting, but it seems appropriate now, have a plan for a lot of the surveys to happen over the summer? So we have that information or is that not in the works? When we start talking about policy as early as September, it'd be nice to have some of that information ahead of time, so do we have a plan in the works for that?
I would say that, um, I wouldn't survey anybody before Labor Day. I think that that's probably a good timeframe. We would work with and, and, and do all the appropriate, um, contracting, put, you know, depending upon the cost, we could put it out for bid. Or if, if not, we could use, you know, the vendor that we've used previously. And, uh, and they, and they have a good sense of who to survey, what are you, what information you're trying to get? Here's the best times to do that, here's the biggest windows. I think the tech surveys were very successful. Um, that, that it's their most successful move. Uh, but yes, so the idea would be, we wouldn't be having these meetings until we had that information ahead of time. CBAC will be providing an update, CBAC is, um, is, is back in action, so they are, they're gonna be coming on October. Oh, it's October 24th. I have it up there as bond CTE update, but, but yeah, that's CBAC. Uh, so, so members of staff, members of CBAC, um, I was able to attend the first CBAC meeting. What a great group of individuals that are gonna help us out with that, really appreciate them.
Acronym alert with CBAC?
City, Community Bond Oversight Council Committee. Club.
Are those, are those updates, um, expected to happen at a certain cadence? Or are they at the will of the board or the will of the district staff?
It's district staff typically, I believe that it's just that we'll get into a rhythm, you'll hear at least once a semester. Um, and Rob Price has already told me what, you know, he kind of, over the course of the, all the operational updates that he would hope to provide to the board. But we can always do more, we can always do, you know, whatever you'd like.
Is there a way to think about as we go forward with CBAC updates, way to, ways to, um, interface with our other communities so that we avoid what happened at city council? I know we tried, but just invite them or send them, share the, the update or something so that they have, feel a little more engaged with what's going on in the schools and their communities? I don't know how we've done that in the past. Um, but just something to think about.
Okay, yeah. Just as a way to make sure that all of our municipalities, well, you know, based on the meetings that I had this past spring with all the city managers, we could make sure that we're getting that information, ask them to share them with, share that information with, uh, their, their boards.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not thinking extra work, I'm thinking just share what we're getting shared with.
We can totally do that. Heather's written that down, so we won't forget that. Um, a- after reading the healthy kids survey data, which I shared with you all last week, um, and thinking about budget implications, really important that, um, that I think we do an update on student support mental health update, um, including that data, talking about what we're doing, um, in all topics, mental health, I think, uh, that September 12th meeting is a, is a good meeting to, and we have that as a
That is an information item.
Information item.
I mentioned this to Rob before everyone came, um, I'd really like, um, also to hear from the counselors. I feel like over the past three years, whenever there's a new initiative, it's like the counselors are gonna do this, the counselors are gonna do that. And when there's some kind of mental health issue, um, the counselors take care of it. I think it's really important, we hear from the counselors, find out what they do, what they don't do, what they're trained to do, what they're hired to do, and what support they need in this whole conversation, so.
Yep.
Um, and so student support, you know, lends itself to that. So I'd like the counselors included in this whole conversation.
Piggybacking on that a little bit with the new state law passed about mental health screening possibilities, I would like to have that discussion potentially embed itself here or elsewhere as, as far as how, where do we wanna stand on screening for student mental health with our other health screeners in light of this healthy kids survey results, the new state law.
Yep. I think both are important conversations for us to have. The other reality is, is that when you look at our budget, we have a lot of our mental health supports on one-time dollars and are very much reliant on grants to keep some of those going. And we've made significant increases in the, in the amount of services and people, FTE. And, uh, as we think about declining enrollment and thinking about investments moving forward, it's just important for us to be really clear on, here's what we do, here's who, who does what, here's what that looks like, uh, so we can be prepared to have those conversations move forward. And I will now go to the big board, kind of just do a quick review, and then I will turn it over to Heather.
Copy that.
So I don't wanna carry around the microphone like Bob Barker.
You are drunk.
All right, here we go. Um, a couple other things that are on here that necessarily weren't in priorities, just are kind of regular rhythm. Uh, August 8th, we'll be reviewing CASB resolutions, uh, because we always do that, it always finds its way on the calendar. But the, the, the deadline to, to submit CASB resolutions is earlier this year than it has been in the past. Um, we also have on the August 15th, policy IKF graduation requirements, which was supposed to be happening in the spring, and, uh, we just kind of ran out of time. Then we go to school attendance policies in, in late August. Uh, back to school update, which is where we'll bring the team, you'll get to know and introduce them. Um, I'd love to bring our new principals, so you all can get a chance to meet them as well. Um, maybe even Laura, as I'm looking at this, if, if, if the board would be willing, we can invite them to, to dinner.
See that, I thought that was really successful.
I would love to do that, and so I'm gonna put this on here, Laura, so.
Okay, I can write it in one.
Yeah, well, I'm just gonna put it there as a reminder. Um, we also have DAC, our DAC engagement, December, September 12th work session. Uh, that's, that's, that we do that, um, on a semester basis. Budget development, student support. Um, September 19th is our ballot initiative legislative priorities. And so, um, we'll work together to figure out how, how board members can have things considered in that process, as we had discussed. Uh, attendance boundary policy, CMAS, PSAT, SAT, ending September. October, student fee policy, strategic plan metrics. October 17th, youth equity council dinner, um, then open enrollment policy. Uh, so that's a work session evening, so that gives us plenty of time there. Um, October 24th, focus schools policy, uh, strategic plan update, bond CBAC update. And then in November 14th and the 28th, I've just set aside the work sessions for policy work. Um, and not, um, and have moved November 14th to a, a work session from a regular meeting, would be my suggestion. We would, we only had two regular meetings, and I felt like having just another work session, um, if that would be okay with the board. And then all of this would then go over here. And then we have a cancellation of the November 21st meeting because it's all, it's over the Thanksgiving holiday. And then, um, we also have two executive sessions, one for September 12th, one for November 28th. It just seems like a litigation update, personnel updates, things that we wanna keep you apprised of, to do those once a quarter, just as a practice. Um, in the November, late November, um, LRAC, elementary school lunch. Then we have December 5th, uh, swearing in new board members. Then we have CASB, where I'd hope we'd be able to have a retreat, um, of some sort with new board members. We'll work on planning that. At, in December, a bilingual ed update, um, budget update, policy work, our financial audit, which would be approved in work session. My mid-year vows, December 19th, and enrollment update. And then starting January 9th with the CBAC update. Kathy?
Is there any way to move the bilingual so that Richard can actually hear it? It's not that other board members won't be interested, but I just, if we could move that to sometime before November.
October 10th.
Is that all right, Richard? Will you have enough information to do it then, Rob?
We'll share, we have all the best information we have.
Lisa, that's what you were gonna say too?
Yeah.
All right, great minds think alike, excellent. Anyone else, questions, comments? Kathy?
I know you said you did a SPED update, but it seems like with all the SPED intensity, is there any way to put a SPED update in the fall? To reflect, I think it'd be good for the community to hear that we've listened and
Well, why don't we have Heather put that li, on the list? I would say that we have a little bit of room, um, not much. And, and if it's recurring work, an update on work we're already doing versus new work, I think that's different. Uh, September 26th, we've got a spot. It might, that might fit there. I'm hesitant to add anything that would step on or rush the, the, this, um, the work session work on those policies. And, or I could triple up, uh, here. Or, well, that's exec session DAC, that's, that's a bit much. I think we have two or three spots.
Okay, cause I know that's an important issue to vet as well, and I think it is ongoing work, Rob, not new work, but I also think it's important to give that feedback.
The board would like to do that, we could totally make that happen.
Fantastic, so Rob, do you bring that, talky box? We don't mind sharing. Um, you guys just made a question I was going to ask, which is before we invite additional topics, how much bandwidth is there in the board's work plan and the staff work plan? And it sounds like a little, but not a lot?
Well, that's why I shared this with you all. I mean, if you take a deep look in this folder, you can see, um, very clearly what we're doing every month, what we're leading with our principals, um, what we're doing in our DLT meetings. Um, you know, we have packed agendas, we again have some new expectations for all schools around some ma, some curriculum implementations, some new math, um, assessments, um, really increasing this culture of data-driven conversations to support MTSS, tier-two instruction, reducing the achievement and opportunity gap. Um, and we have some positive classroom cul- climate and culture work that will be happening in as well. I would say we have more time for things that is a review of other work that's already in, in, in kind of rhythm, right? So special education will fit into that. More opportunities for informational updates. We have less time, um, for work session items where we're digging into big things together. Not if we wanna start really taking on some of these big policies that impact potentially declining enrollment.
Clarifying question before we jump into more topics? All right. Anyone else have clarifying questions before we hear additional topics? All right, the running list that I have so far, we can take them and additional items in whatever order y'all prefer, again, is do you want a tour bond project, is there more or different, do you wanna see them related to LGBTQ? Uh, more or different, do you wanna see them related to student engagement above and beyond the student moment? Um, anything you wanna visit about, uh, related to discipline in the context of restored justice? Community schools policy, and then a SPED update, those are the things that I've tracked. So now, um, why don't we start with your ideas and we can circle back to those, Lisa, go.
For a variety of reasons, I would love it if we could do an update on our SSA program and safety work this fall. I would love our community to hear about the training we're doing, the ways that our folks are learning from Amy and from other people, as well as all the different ways that our schools are incredibly safe.
Can be done within the context of what's already underway, or is that something we need to discuss?
We can absolutely do that, uh, and I hear what you're saying, Lisa, I think that, that does make a ton of sense. You know, it just depends on what other board, like, we could do that, we could do special education, I could put those on the board right now. Are there other big topics that folks are hoping that we would kind of dive into or discuss?
Let's hear the other ideas and then we'll still go back before we start putting things on the board. Um, I see Stacy and Kathy.
I just wanna second Lisa's suggestion, I think it's timely, it's important. And, and I think there's a lot of miscommunication and misinformation and misunderstanding about what we do in our schools. And I think, I think it's a good idea.
Kathy was gonna say the same, oh, fantastic.
The same thing, and I think if we could have some of our SSA officers come, I have to say, when I met the one at Monarch and he walked through a day, I had no idea. And so I think having a sense for the community, and I know we shouldn't be responding to what's happening out there in the political world, but I think until we can correct what's going on, we're gonna be hearing a lot of misunderstandings and misstatements, um, especially in what's going on in our sister districts, so I think that's a great idea. But I was just gonna add, if we could have, and not just have somebody talk about what they do, but have one of them come in and actually talk about what they do during a day, cause it's impressive.
Are there board members who don't wanna have this added on to do, are you saying topic? Uh, no, I'm not saying, I put my hand down. Okay, I'll come back to that one, no, no. Okay, my hand's not up, great, got it, okay, I do wanna hear about that. Oh, good, you wanna hear about that, anything you wanna add?
I was just gonna say, as I mentioned, the last board meeting earlier is better on this topic because there's, it's going to be, uh, uh, with our school board elections coming up, it is going to be a topic of community, um, engagement and discussion for those that are running. And so to help them and our community understand before that message gets out of our hands would be better, so sooner the better.
August 22nd?
Yes.
Yep.
Work for everybody?
Kathy, Kathy's got that.
I have a question.
Yep.
To what extent does this roll into the safe pathways and the work you've been doing with the city? Could you include an update with that, cause I think they're related.
Safe pathways.
Safe pathways, so just the overall safety of our schools and kids getting to school? If we could just somehow include a statement about what we're doing around that, cause I think that
It's not like we're in Hattonburg, like the safe works just
No, I'm talking about the ballot measure and the concerns that we've heard about all year.
Sorry, when you were saying safe pathways, I didn't know you meant, uh, okay.
I'll do, I have an SNA update, but I also have school safety and SSA update, does that work for everybody?
Yeah. I think August 22nd is a great day for that too, since that's the back to school update. Yeah, it all kind of feeds into each other.
See, we left a space there for these.
All right, got one, okay. Um, anyone else have additional topics, other ones that I summarized earlier, that you wanna have us kick around, Nicole?
If we're gonna do a special ed update, we still have a lot of outstanding stuff with the GT work, we finished that on, we have work to do. Dot, 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 so if we're gonna get an update on special education, I think IEPs, 504s, ALPs, kind of, I think about them similarly.
Are you suggesting a super session?
I'm saying if we touch one, I think we need to, cause there's work to do in both, I think we should touch. I'm saying if we touch one, I think we need to, because there's work to do in both, I think we should touch. Whether it's the same time or different time, that would just be something I'd advocate for.
Kathy thoughts on that?
I agree that it just grew, but I do think we need to think about 504s because we talk about IEPs a lot and we don't talk about 504s and parents are there's a lot of confusion out there. So it might be a supersession or at least just one that we don't try to double up with.
I'll just need a little more time to get ready, so.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't think that's as urgent as what we just talked about, but I think.
Special Ed 504 gifted talented update.
Let me just check, so people understand the different buckets and the different requirements and.
Does that have to be in the fall? No, I'm just saying, I mean, we just heard the updates about, we just heard the updates of both of them, not too long ago. I feel like we should give Rob some time to get back to us with some meaningful information. If it's in August or September, we're not gonna have anything new that we heard a month ago.
I was thinking November, December.
I would, I would hope November. And the reason Stacy is because I said in the parent meeting with.
I understand, I mean, we also have to make sure that they.
No, I know, and it may not be, it may just be an interim update, but I think it, to the extent that we can give parents a sense that this is an issue that we're paying attention to and it may not, and Rob can totally say here's the work in progress and here's where we're still going and you'll hear more in the spring.
I have a proposal.
Okay.
I can move the strategic plan update to September 26th.
Okay.
And I can move this to October 24th. Everybody's okay with that, we'll decide this until we get.
That gives you adequate time to develop new information based on what you've previously presented to the board.
It's giving time to fix all the problems.
Come on, Rob.
But I, but here's, here's what I'm hearing from like, you've got parents engaged on all of these topics. Right, I think that giving them an update on what we've heard, where we're at, setting the stage for budget process. October feels like, end of October feels, feels as good as you're gonna get because we just don't have the time in November. And then December, then we have we're gonna try to get things in under the, I'm comfortable with that if the board's.
Anyone troubled? Sound right? Okay, let's do that. Okay, let's circle back, Richard, to your previous suggestion that perhaps the board take up the community schools policy. Do you want to say a few words about what you would hope to discuss so we can get other folks' perspectives on that?
We need to just revisit the policy again because it appears to be problematic still for some organizations that want to use community schools and the fees that are being attached to the rental of the of the facilities and stuff like that. So I just, I just want to see if we can't revisit that and see if we can't clarify some of that language in there. I know that we just did that, but I don't think it was real clear in terms of what organizations can utilize community schools or school facilities without being charged a whole lot of rent. That makes it pretty much impossible for them to utilize the space. That in particular.
Other board member's thoughts and perspectives, yes, Kathy?
I'm just, if you could be more specific, because we did spend a lot of time redoing that policy, so if you could just to help us understand where you think the holes are and what the changes would need to be, because it still feels a little big to me and I thought we'd take this on.
Well, there are some, I gotta get the policy in front of me to reread it again, okay, but.
No, I was just saying before we take it on in specific, it'd be good to know what you think the concerns are and where the holes are.
Well, the concern that I have is that you have organizations like Centro Amistad, you have organizations like Inter Cambio, all of those different types of organizations that try to utilize and have left using the commu- the the school district facilities because they're continuing to be charged rent. And it seems to me like those are, those are organizations that actually help us reach our mission in terms of getting our kids educated, that's what I'm talking about.
Nicole?
I would like to hear from Kathleen on her bandwidth. We have a lot of policy work on the whiteboard. We have all of our food nutrition policies that have to be updated as a result of FF, other legal changes that are requiring policy updates. So I just want to be mindful for policy, the number we have, the number of red lines that are currently outstanding and with whether we have the bandwidth before. I would feel comfortable saying yes or no, it's the bandwidth question.
Before Kathleen goes on, I just want to say that this is just a relook at it. I don't think it's gonna take a whole lot of time to do that.
Lisa have a thought before we go to Kathleen?
Yeah, my thought is that Richard has been talking about this for years and that approaching the end of his eight years, if he doesn't feel it's been adequately addressed, I would like to give some time to make sure that he does.
Kathleen, do you want to speak to your bandwidth? Do you want to speak to Kathleen's bandwidth?
Yes. I mean, I think, I think with this policy, you know, what, what, what Richard is discussing and the, and the board would, would consider is, isn't a big, deep rewrite. It's the idea that there would be certain partners, right, that would have to qualify for something, you know, a diff- you know, different prices than other partners. And, you know, is, is that something that, that we would want to do as a school district? And then what would be the criteria that you'd have to set for folks to qualify? You know, do, you know, would that be part of, the question I'd have, Richard, is is that part of an MOU process? Where we, versus a policy change? But to have a public conversation around that, I, I don't know, I don't think that it would take, I mean, because we would take the direction from the board, right? The board would be doing the work, we would just be doing the rewriting, we're not gonna have to research it and this is just a philosophical question, right?
Stacy, your Kitty thoughts on this one? You know about one way or the other, Kitty?
No, I agree that we should address that.
Okay.
In whichever way would work best to identify who's providing a service to our community that we might otherwise have to do.
Kathy or Nicole thoughts?
Again, I just think the more specific we can be as we take a dive into this and to Rob, if it's an MOU issue, the better, the less time we'll spend and the more specific we can get in trying to solve it, once we know exactly what the issues are.
I mean, maybe a little digging, right? You know, to Richard's point, if we have long trusted partners that no longer can afford to be within our schools and our facilities is that you know, I mean, you know, to a certain extent that, you know, with, with community issues, you know, you, you have to have some rules to the road. But knowing and understanding what partners that we've had that we say are partners that are no longer able to partner with us just because of the, of the finances. I mean, I think it would be good for the board to take a look at that and then, you know, make a decision and know and understand kind of moving forward. But we would put that, I don't know that that's an information item or a work site item, I think you would just put that on policy. Right, study? And we could bring, and we could prep and bring some information. So it's, so, so it's not like a thirty, forty minute conversation.
Nicole, anything you want to add? Okay. So I'm seeing at least four heads nodding on that one, let's plan for that one. Are you creating, you said you're not creating a specific date for it, but just adding it into a policy discussion?
We can, we do, if we, if we get it before some of those other stuff, maybe it would be helpful.
Okay.
Right, so what policy is it, Kathy?
It's KF and KF dash R.
For that one, if some of the OE and attendance policies, we need survey information, then we could do fees and we could do KF potentially earlier if we need to.
How many times have we put it on September 12th? That's a full meeting.
And that'll be, yeah.
We can, we can fit it there.
Yeah, that's fine. We need to bring AE back.
Okay. Okay. The talk is all right?
Yeah, that'll work for me, because, you know, another thing that might work too, and I don't know what timing it is and how much time it would take, but I know that there's, in the, in the past, there have been nonprofit organizations that have utilized facilities in Boulder Valley schools that are not utilizing facilities now because of the policy. If we can track that, that would be helpful too.
A little bit of research. Thanks, Kathy. Okay. All right. Those appear to be the only things that came from board members directly, want to circle back to some doors that, Rob, you sort of opened loosely during your comments.
They're closing.
They're closing, they're getting ever closer. One was discipline related to restorative justice. Anything else you want to say about that before I see if there's appetite? The board, big, big thing, small thing?
I, I think that, I, I think that we can continue to look at the, the results. We will, you'll see the results of strategic plan metrics. Another, you know, to bring Janelle to do another update. You know, maybe we can bring it in a strategic plan update, Laura? Just one or two slides so you get a feel for it. And that, maybe that's the best way to do that.
Laura, does that sound all right?
Which just got moved to September 26th.
Yes. Fantastic, thank you. Great, all right, then, student engagement, you just talked briefly about the student moment, how that is organized and then, Rob, you said anything else the board might want to discuss on that? Yes?
I am fine kicking that to the new board since they're the ones that are gonna be engaging with the students and see what they're comfortable with, that's not something I think we need to solve between now and November.
I agree.
Carry over the current approach, tell me more. Okay, anyone troubled? Lovely. LGBTQ, again, anything else more different? Richard, go ahead.
Yeah, this is probably a little bit a big thing for me because I'm looking at who are the, who is in the district responsible for making sure that issues around LGBTQ plus are addressed? And what role do all individuals have to play in it? Currently, we have our equity team, which are pretty much limited in terms of the number of people that we have in place to do this humongous work that we want to accomplish. So I'm looking at how could we maybe expand that particular team? I know it's a big, a big deal here because we're looking at budget limitations and all of that. But it's a big effort that we're, that we put ourselves in as it relates to equity issues in our district. And and not just LGBTQ plus, but a bunch of other equity issues that this particular little tiny department has, if in fact we can call it that. So I think we need to provide a lot more resources to that team to be able to accomplish whatever they need to accomplish around issues regarding LGBTQ plus and other equity issues in our district. Couple of things that come to mind is in the past, we had an, an equity department that would train all of the teachers plus principals on issues around white privilege, racism, discrimination, all of that. And and then when you get to budget issues, those are the things that are cut first and that's, that went away when we had some budget issues at one time. And I'm concerned, especially around the discussion around declining enrollment. I'm also concerned around the issues around less money coming into the district and that there, in the future, there are going to have to be some budget cuts. And I'm very concerned that the first things to go in this district have been in the past. Those particular programs that have been designed to combat equity issues, racial issues, et cetera, so I'm really concerned about that and I'm hoping that we can send a message to the new board members and all the other folks in, 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 in our district that no, we're gonna look at programs that meet the needs of kids first as opposed to just making blanket cuts. And that's happened before in this district. So I'm hoping that we can do something to ramp up the effort of our equity team, our equity councils and, and to, to, to look more at issues around LGBTQ plus and also other equity issues.
Rob, anything you dad got what's currently underway?
Well, I would say that if you, if you had a chance to look at the Healthy Kids survey results, there is not a more fragile or at-risk group of students than we have right now than those students who identify as LGBTQ plus. And so I think that we could talk about that potentially within that mental health update. And Richard, to your point, I, I understand your, your worry around around this, but I would say that this is so, I, I would not be able to deliver on our strategic plan without those folks. And to, and to your point, the question needs to be, do we need to be thinking about potentially additional supports, maybe specifically around LGBTQ, maybe just more, you know, driven to, to equity as we think about gaps, how they're moving, how they're not moving, how we're supporting kids. The data shows us that, you know, we've got work to do, especially around mental health with LGBTQ. So I think we could talk about the September 12th update and certainly your point is, is well noted, Richard, to kind of under.
Kitty?
So this piggybacks on what Richard was talking about, but whatever happened to the Safe Schools Coalition?
It's still, we, we still have meetings, I'm, I'm not sure who's heading up our team right now.
We never hear anything about it.
Okay.
And for years I was part of it.
Yep, no, we still meet, I believe it is, Amy Nelson is the one who directs that meeting, I'd have to get back to you. It was Sam SCA for a long time. And then when Sam transitioned to, to CDE, then I want to say, Amy, we can get you an update on that, news and notes on where we're at with Safe Schools Coalition.
I appreciate addressing it to some degree during the mental health update, but I mean, when a kid is getting bullied at school for being trans or for being gay, it's not because of a lack of mental health support, it's because of a lack of training for school officials on what to do and how to identify bullying and how to handle situations like that. We need to have supports in place to support those kids after they've been harmed, but it's not the same thing as a proactive approach. And I know we do all of these things, but I don't feel like addressing it once under mental health support for how we help kids who've been harmed is the same as talking top down, we're about to have a board election, anything could happen in the next few years. How confident do we feel that regardless of what happens with our board, our schools are well equipped to keep our LGBTQ students safe? And I think that's a bit more of what Richard's addressing with equity departments and training and what are we doing to really make sure our schools are safe places?
And I agree with what they're saying and wondering if there's a way to somehow interface it too with what Stacy said earlier about what our counselors are doing and how our counselors what, how they're addressing this issue. There's some overlap there, I think it is broader than mental health too. I think having a small department, I, I think Amy and others worked really hard, but it's 30,000 students and teachers who aren't necessarily ill-minded, but they don't, they don't know what to do. I'm trying to put the best spin on it I can, Richard.
Nicole has a thought while Rob thinks.
A lot of this also has to do with the, how accountable are we holding individuals to meeting the, the, the policies and the practices we have established? Like, how, how do we know how, how those are being, being carried out at sites and with individual staff members, where are the gaps? So I think it's, it's a, it's a broader topic and it touches a lot of different things. Another thing I want to touch on with what Richard was saying is it relates a little bit to budget. When we move into these future budgeting cycles, really being, having clarity around trade-offs with dollars is going to be incredibly important and having that information to say we fund, like, money is not infinite, there are trade-offs and being explicit about what the trade-off might be. So board, this board, future boards are public, are very well informed about the hows and whys we get to these hard decisions, so that's just what I wanted to add.
It, it feels like a work session, what, what you're describing, right? It would be kind of, kind of an equity themed kind of work session, here's the works that we're doing, here's the policies. If you all will allow me, I will put this here and figure out you all want to do this. You want to do this before October 24th, right? If I had to put it somewhere, well.
Can I ask a question? You said that Jonathan in our department is doing a deeper dive and some synthesis of the Healthy Kids survey results. Like, do we have a lot of, do we have concrete information that we could use if it's, this is something that would be a board decision point at, at some period of time or is it just a overall information item? Like, does it exist for us to be, have a useful conversation?
The data is pretty clear in regards to what was on Health Kids. Right, I think that's why I wanted to do the student support mental health. But I'm also hearing that it's deeper than that, you know, how, how does this board cement and solidify the equity work at the school district? Like, that's what I'm hearing, right? So that's a little bit different. It's not, I don't want, I don't want to just give this one or two slides if you all want to really talk about what you believe and what you think and what your hopes are for the next board, right?
Rob, can you remind us what's? Rob, can you remind us what's, what is, what else is in that block that would be a potential trade-off or delay?
I'm looking, I'm looking, yeah, that's why I was thinking, I, I don't.
It's all time-sensitive, it's all.
I mean, these fees, these policies, I really want to honor the fact that we've got to dig in on that stuff. I don't want to compromise that. I mean, if you look at the work of the board from August to November, policy, 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 priorities, DAC, policy. And so, and I just think those are going to be deep conversations.
Richard, do you have a suggestion?
I, I have a question. Go ahead, Rob, finish. I'm sorry.
You could switch. I mean, the only space we have is August 15th. I don't know. Let me ask Kathy, let me ask you this. Could we do, what, what do you, are there any of these other policies you'd be ready for by August 15th?
Any of what other, the four categories we talked about?
No, no, yeah, I mean, we can do school attendance policies, we could bump that a week and then give us to the 22nd to kind of talk about this.
What's on the DAC date? Because that's, that's generally not super long.
Well, we have an exec session, then we have DAC, then we have two information items. We put her right there if you'd like. Just, we might just run a little bit late that night, or I can move this exec session to, I don't know, August 8th. Does that make sense? We won't have that much work. I, I mean, you're going to get an update today, so.
Just, just a quick question, because I'm, I'm looking at the calendar and it seems to me like, are, are we married to, because these are all Tuesdays, right?
Mm-hmm.
Are, are we married to just meeting on Tuesdays? I mean, I mean, there's four, five days in the week.
We're five days. I think so.
Richard, are you asking if the board wants to add like a special session on another not Tuesday?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, because it's.
Carry down for a special session on equity work.
Yeah.
Can I not, that doesn't kill Rob.
If it's just a one-off, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I can't commit to, to a lot more time in the fall. I just can't. And it, it concerns me if this is going to start a precedent that like every other week or every month, we're going to have an, I mean, I know I'm only on until, you know, the end of this, until November or December, but it concerns me, like I said, if it's a one-off, I'm happy to participate, but I'm concerned of the precedent it might start and I just, I can't commit to that.
It, it did sound like Kathy, Kathleen, we were maybe going to be able to sort of make space for it here without having to add an extra day?
I'm just worried about staff bandwidth, so if we added the extra day later on before November, I would, if that gave people more time to do it. I was thinking about what Nicole said, and I just think it's really important that the community and our staff here, that this is a high priority and that being accountable to it is something where you really want to make sure people, because we're just hearing anecdotal stories all over the place that are just heartbreaking. And so the message somehow isn't getting through, or I don't know what we need to be doing, but I think a special session on this issue does not bother me, but I'm mindful of what Stacy says. We've never done it before and I, I think we could put enough parameters around it that this isn't something that we say is an accepted policy.
Extra, extra, extra special? Lisa, what do you think?
I disagree completely. I do think that there are reasons why we might go out of our way to do a special session here when we haven't usually. I think the other reason I see that suggestion is having value is if we shoehorn it in on a busy night, we're going to hear a 45-minute presentation, ask three questions, and move on. And if we're really going to talk about this, we should give ourselves a Monday with three hours and sit around and talk about it. It should be something that really has our full attention and focus. I can't think of anything more valuable than making sure our kids are safe in schools.
Laura?
But rather than having a different day, since everybody bully has in their mind Tuesdays are board days, and that's where I try to come from, my philosophy is, I'm asking you to walk up one day. Would it make more sense to do it Tuesday morning or Tuesday afternoon rather than a whole different day?
I see heads shaking now.
I, I would rather have it be the off Tuesday where we don't have anything. Tuesdays are my busiest days at work in addition to board days, and I just, I can't, I just can't personally. But if it was on the off day and the evening, the off week and the evening, you're right, we, Tuesdays are it, right? I, I would support that.
So the first Tuesdays, we typically have DAC.
Okay, hold on. Go ahead, Laura, finish that.
First Tuesdays, we typically have a DAC meeting. Some months, there's five Tuesdays. So there could be a fifth Tuesday where we could plug something in. That keeps it all on Tuesdays. DAC meetings, we've got one board member that goes to that.
So as for DAC, you, the board member doesn't have to stay through the meeting. The report is early on the agenda.
Lisa, your suggestion was?
Oh, I was saying, we have two fifth Tuesdays. One is Halloween, the other is August 29th.
Laura, do you want to send an email to the board after this, just to double, double, quadruple check? Beth's not here, just.
Is, are Rob and Kathleen okay with that date?
He whispered that he was cool. Go ahead, Stacy.
I just want to make sure that if a board member can't make it, it's not an indication of them not caring.
Right.
I might have to be driving my son back to Connecticut that week and I just, I mean, I really, it's fine. And I, I would never hold up a meeting if just because I may not be able to be there. It's not, that's fine, if it's my choice. But I just want, I just want to lay it out there that if, if it's on a day that someone can't come, it's not because they don't care, it's because truly they probably can't come.
So option one is you go with the 29th and hope that those who are available can come because most of you are here and think that that will work. Option two is you ask Laura to double-check and see if there's a better day, Tuesday. Kathy, what's your preference?
Laura spends a lot of time doing Google polls. I would just say, we're all in here, let's make it the 29th.
29th is a great idea.
And take it off Laura's to-do list, other than to publish it.
From when to when?
When it comes.
Like, the normal time.
Normal board meeting time on August 29th.
Or 4:35.
Yeah, that sounds good, like 5 to 7, and we'll see what happens.
Yeah. 5 to 7? Kathleen?
Do we want to look at the bullying policy as part of this? Because I hear a lot of conversation around bullying and we do have some updates to do there.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay.
What do you know, it worked out.
See, we can do stuff. Fantastic. Go into the room, Rob and Victor.
I did, listen, I, I'll go, I'll be back.
Laura, I was just interviewing for new associates and, and one of my staff was, was asking that question, they're just like, I see that you have a master's degree in public policy from Harvard, wondering if they cover doodle polling there, because like 98% of his job is doodle polling. You're wondering they don't cover that apparently, Harvard. Okay, uh, here's what I've captured. We're going to have a special session on LGBTQ plus, all the things that are.
I would, I would call it equity work.
Equity and bullying. And that's going to be on August 29th. Someone should, at the earliest convenience, notify Beth so she can get that on her calendar to see if she's able. Of course, if anyone is, it might be helpful for someone to say out loud at that meeting. If there are board members who are not present, we do not presume that that means anything.
Same.
Right. They care just as much as the rest of us. Things that we've officially added then to the board separately are the school safety update and associated things, the sped update and many associated things, and a quick review of the community schools policy with some advanced research that Kathleen's going to do on who might otherwise be using that. And then, I'm going to, bum, 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 discipliner sort of justice, we're going to go ahead and add that to the update, the strategic plan metrics that Laura's going to be doing. Changes to student engagement, we're not going to do anything about that, wait and see what the news, what the new board would like to do, just talking about LGBTQ plus. And then, Rob, you said that you would send an update on the Safe Schools Coalition to the board?
Yep.
And then, Rob, you also said that you would share materials that the board gets related to the bond with your municipal partners so that the electeds can also have a look at that?
Yep.
Cool. And then, when the board is, is visiting about the mental health discussion, we're going to include counselors in that, as well as about question on mental health screening coming out of state policy. Last, that hanging thread that I had, Rob, that you raised, was, does the board want to tour the bond project areas?
I would like to advocate for that being moved into second semester or beyond, given the additional meeting we already have proposed. It is election season for a lot of folks, people are going to be busy, and depending on who the benefit of these tours is for, I would like to, to punt that into later in the schedule.
Kathy?
I actually think it'd be good to do it sooner because of that, because there's a, people who are going to be paying attention and even potential candidates could learn a lot by doing that, and we've been punting this for years now and we haven't had a bond tour or a bond update like that in a really long time. And it's optional. I mean, we've done that before where people can just show up. We have, we have so many bus drivers, I'm sure it wouldn't be a problem getting a bus driver to drive us around, right? And, and I'm just, I was taken aback by what happened at city council. I know there's lots of reasons and lots of, everybody says we did what we could, but to the extent that we can include other partners in this kind of work. And the reason I like it so much is that we're also trying to have these community conversations around what does CTE look like and what are we doing around the CTE with the bond work? And I know you've been having those meetings, but it seems like a nice confluence of that. But that said, if it doesn't fit and you do it in the spring, what we haven't done in the past, which I hope we would do, and this will seem very self-serving and it probably is, is that we've not invited other people to participate. Like, I invited Jenny and Laura, and Lori to come see what they had done through their hard work, because once you go off the board, you're kind of a non-entity, which I'm fine with, but I think that if you could make it a broader tour so that you include more people.
By other people, you mean past board members?
Not just past board members, the past CBAC members, because they've worked really, I mean, there's a lot of people who have been engaged, right? And CTE people, I mean, you could make this a, a bigger showcase and that really might speak to the spring, but I think not doing it, obviously, won't have a say in it, but if we did it in the spring, if you made it broader and, and included all of the components of the bond and the different entities from municipalities, like I said, CBAC, whoever else from the different committees would want to be engaged, I think it could be really, could be really positive, Rob, really.
Yeah, let, let me check with, let me check with our operations team. These tours do take a lot of coordinating, a lot of effort, making sure that everybody's ready, the schools are prepped. Let me, let me take a look. If we did, it would not be on a board meeting day or in lieu of a board, it would be just a separate, we scheduled something, October, name it, and who can, whoever can come, can come. So, so I think that we can do something, let me just kind of talk about what that would be and how much work that would be and then.
And I am fine with spring, if you make it a broader, because we've not done a very good job advertising it with others, and I just think as part of a community engagement piece, it could be. And, and we've talked about the parent, whatever we're calling it, doing it at a different school. I mean, I just think there's ways to get our community out into our schools and this might be a way to, to help do that.
Yep.
And so spring would be fine as a way to try to engage.
And that's part of, again, thinking about what happened with the New Vista conversation at the Boulder City Council meeting. They are going to be very busy and entrenched in their elections in the fall, so if we want to engage our local officials and say, hey, so the council members from these different localities, do you want to attend a school that was benefited from this bond money in your municipality? They might have more bandwidth also post-election.
The only other thing to that though, Nicole, is if we wanted to include our electeds, our state legislators, they can't do that in the spring. And there is some benefit to having them get out in the school. So lots of things to think about, Rob. Obviously not the highest priority, but I think getting our electeds and others out into the schools is not a bad way to go.
Are there other board participantes on this, Lisa?
Yeah, I'm sort of, I guess I want to say first that I, I do think that inviting other folks is great and also that I don't think we, I think we've done an excellent job of engaging the community around New Vista and that if a different organization's staff has not been keeping them updated to their desired levels, that is really on them. Having said that, I was actually going to just make the same plea as Kathy, that four of us are getting ready to leave you and if there's any way to include us in future tours of New Vista, we would love to see those products. So I don't care when we do this, but New Vista, you know, if you can, if you can toss an invitation our way. I know we don't, especially Kathy and I still reserve the right, I think, to be part of the sledgehammer team tearing down our old middle schools, so.
We do have dibs on an old locker, I think, still.
Yeah.
There you go.
Excellent. Board, any additional thoughts related to bond tours? So put it on the, the list for the spring, try to do some outreach to outsiders, electeds, other entities, as well as former board members, former CBAC members, and former CTE members.
The only caveat with the spring is that we can't get our elected legislators, so leave it up to Rob to figure it out when he talks to staff.
Okay.
And whatever it is, it'll be.
Fair enough. Fantastic. All right, board, any additional thoughts, questions, comments that you have related to the work that lies ahead? Looks like a busy semester. Rob, any thoughts that you have?
Just appreciate this process, that we've honored this process, that, that folks have, have had an opportunity to speak up, advocate for things, make some adjustments, and really, it helps, as just a reminder, it really helps me as I work with our team to let them know this is our collective priorities. It really helps steer the direction of the, of the district in ways that vision, mission, policy doesn't, right? Because this is the work of the district, so it's just, I think, really important. I truly appreciate it.
Fantastic.
Just to keep Beth's voice in the room, Rob, if you could just walk us through in the fall, I know long-range planning and declining enrollment is on top of mind of everybody. If you could just kind of give a high level again, how that's going to hit all the way through and how we're addressing it, we're not kicking the can down the road, what are we doing to kind of keep that front and center as we go forward? I mean, I know it's in budget, I know, I mean, it fits everywhere, but if you could just kind of encapsulate that, that, I think that would be really helpful.
I think that that is the work of this board between the end of September and, and, and through December. We have policy work and work sessions dedicated, lots of time dedicated to digging into this, I think, these really complicated issues. And so, you know, I spoke with Beth as well, I know that that was her priority, is to make sure we dig into that. And so I think that she'll be really pleased with all these parts of us.
Fantastic. Thanks Kathy for making sure that we don't forget.
Yeah, and I just think, Rob, at meetings, to the extent we can highlight that when we're having board meetings, because people don't have the benefit of the plan here, so they don't know that we've got all this great work coming up and they're like, well, you didn't talk about it at this board meeting. So I think, I don't know how we share this out, but it might not be, maybe in August, we could give some kind of overview of here's the work that the board's going to do over the next semester, so that people know what we're doing and understanding and they don't think we're just looking at.
Be in that board spotlight. Yeah.
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 Did you already send the invitation? She's like, and thank you for no doodling, here's your reward. Do it now before I forget about it. All right, in that case, I hand the meeting back to you. Do you need to adjourn officially and then re-adjourn after the rest of us leave for your executive session? Thanks for including me, guys.
I do, so we have a motion to adjourn this prioritization, Kitty, and then Lisa, seconded by Lisa. How about, if, can we take a 15-minute break? I understand all my alarms are going off and there's gas leaking in my house, so I need to go make a phone call.
There is very deep hail.
Yes.
We're shaking, my daughter's freaking out.
So we just all need to go do a check-in and come back at 2:20, does that work?
Shall we all get on the phone with our turn?
Then all go into an executive session at 2:20. Does that work for everybody?
I'm in trouble. Yep, sounds good.
We are reconvening the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education meeting. We have matters to discuss in the executive session. Oh, my, sorry.
We are convening, again, the second session of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education meeting. We have matters to discuss in executive session, but first, Laura, could you take the roll and then we'll take a motion? Garcia.
Here.
Gabhart.
Here.
Niznick.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you. Can you read the motion, please?
I, Stacy Zess, make a motion pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024B, convene an executive session to confer with an attorney for the school board for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions relating to charter school contracts and pending litigation on the following issues: federal litigation regarding race and disability discrimination, and CDE, EEOC, CCRD, OCR complaints alleging age, gender, race, and disability discrimination.
Sarah, second? Seconded by Kitty. Laura, can you call the roll, please? Garcia.[1770.41] We will be moving into the Glacier room and we'll turn the meeting over to Kathleen and Rob.